Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley-Evan School District 6. Today is the 12th day of April 2021. This meeting will now come to order. Will you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Crane, will you call the roll call for us, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Present.
Mrs. Mash?
Present.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Mrs. Mueller?
She's excused tonight.
Ms. Pappas?
Present.
Mrs. Solis?
Present.
Mr. Tally?
Present.
Six members present.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Well, this is our first meeting in April, and we are quickly approaching the end of school, and we're seeing a lot of those things begin to happen. We're having testing this week. We're having CMAS testing this week. We're having PSAT testing and SAT testing at the high school level. And if you're one of those people who thinks that this is not something we should be doing this year and that it would be better to take this week and this time and use it for instruction, we absolutely agree with you as a board, to a person. We would agree that it's not the best way we could use our time, but this is what our federal and state authorities have said we need to do. And so we want to just encourage parents out there to make sure that kids get a good night's sleep this week. These tests are important. We want to do our absolute best, make sure that they get healthy breakfast in the morning, and let's do the best we can on these CMAS and SATs and PSATs. This last Saturday, we had a vaccine distribution, thanks to Sunrise Clinic for putting that on for us. We had 750 students who signed up to get vaccinated, and these were students 16 and above. But we had 750 sign up. I think we had more than 950 actually show up. I think some of those were parents maybe who were with their children as well. But just a tremendous event, and thanks to our administration for putting that on. That just makes our high schools safer, keeps us out of as many quarantines, and lets our juniors and our seniors finish this, our sophomores finish this this year uninterrupted, hopefully. And so we're very thankful to Sunrise and to our administration for that. A couple of just announcements. Vons Vision is offering uninsured and underinsured children with free eye care exam and glasses during, I think it's April 14th and 15th, and you can call and make an appointment for that. And just, you always think that your children can see. It's one of those things you don't always think to check, or you just expect, because they did last year, that they do this year. But it's also one of those things where if there are preventable eye diseases that if we catch early enough, we can address. And if we don't catch early enough, we can't address. So I really encourage everyone to make sure their children, if they have not had an eye exam in recent memory, to get there and make sure that you do. Finally, I want to thank the Success Foundation for their breakfast and $80,000 that were contributed to the Hayfley Opportunity Fund, and for Mr. Hayfley and Ms. Hayfley, who generously started that fund. And so we're very thankful for both the Success Foundation and the Hayfley family. And those are all of my comments tonight. We're now to the public participation regarding our agenda items. And Ms. Crane, I don't believe we have any of those tonight. And so we'll skip right down to our work session report. Ms. Crane?
Board of Education President Michael Matthews began the work session with comments and updates from board members. Superintendent Dr. Gerda Pilch and Chief Financial Officer Megan Sponsler provided an update on the budget and collected feedback from board members on their spending priorities. The board discussed community engagement and debriefed the work session to conclude.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. We're now to our superintendent's report. So Dr. Pilch, I will give this portion to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. I will just share a few updates and celebrations. I want to start first by recognizing our Bachelor Scholar here in District 6, Brendan McCune, who is a senior at Greeley-West High School. And just really an honor to have a Bachelor among our seniors here at Greeley-West. And you know, our students are very well-prepared and compete well when they get to that level. So I had a chance, along with you, President Matthews, to visit a little bit with Brendan at the Success Foundation Drive-Thru Breakfast. So really fun to visit with him and to be able to honor him as a Bachelor Scholar. And I too want to thank everyone who contributed to and participated in the Success Foundation Drive-Thru Breakfast last week. There were, I would guess, over 200 cars that came through and significant donations, and I know people are still donating. I think part of what made that really fun event was the community volunteers that were there, as well as the student volunteers that were there. And I have to tell you, I really enjoyed it because I got to see most everybody who came through by standing there in the line, which I know they want to bring the breakfast back in person and do that in the future. But I had a lot of fun, and I know that those of you who were able to be there that morning had a great time as well. It was a little chilly, but we got through it. I also want to share that plans are well underway for prom at each of our high schools, which will start here two weeks from Friday. And our schools have elected to either do their prom outdoors at the district stadium or indoors with garage doors all open at the Island Grove Big Event Center. So we're really excited about that. We will be requiring students and staff to all be in masks at prom. They will be co-horted into groups of 10, which is kind of what kids do for prom anyways. They kind of have a larger group of kids like that that they hang together with. But they will be co-horted and assigned an area at the prom as their area to dance and hang out in. And I know it sounds a little contrived, but I also know our students are really excited to be coming together and to have a prom, and I'm certainly excited for them. Likewise, graduation plans are underway. We've worked with Weld County Department of Health and Environment on both prom and graduation plans. We do plan to have at least four guests attend this year at the graduation. We will be asking for folks to again be in masks, most likely physically distanced, but we're pleased to be able to offer a graduation. We will livestream those graduations as well for people who aren't able to attend in person. So you know, we're getting, we're starting to do those end-of-year wrap-up things, and you will see the schools that you liaise on with, you might be invited to some of their programs and ceremonies as they begin to close out the school year and prepare for another school year. So we are bringing students and some families together to do some of those activities. Ms. Crane just went out. I also want to share that this coming Friday, you all are coming in for a board work session. We will start the day discussing Innovation 2030 and the objectives and outcomes with Innovation 2030 and getting your feedback on those so we can begin to finalize that plan. Again, to remind you, we're going to roll that out fully in August with all of our staff and families. And then we're also going to share with you the boundary change proposals that we've been discussing and getting feedback on in the different community groups, with the building of new schools and building out a Madison as a K8 instead of a K5. Of course, there's going to be boundary changes, and that was part of, on purpose, here in the strategic plan. And then finally, I'll just wrap up with saying that you all are aware that we were notified here last month by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment that they would be pulling the air monitoring off of the Bell Romero 48 campus. It was monitoring there near the Vettinwell site. But after over 3,000 hours of air sampling and data collection, they have decided that they're not seeing anything remarkable enough to continue to deploy their equipment there and felt like they needed to pull their equipment and move to other areas. What they, as you all know, are particularly interested in monitoring is that early on, production phases and the flowback phases, early on in the development. And that's where they really want to pay attention to see if there are concerns with air quality. And what they've seen in the last several months since October is just really a stabilizing of the air quality there and that the air quality looks very similar to the rest of Weld County. So they have chosen to no longer have what they call a PID or an S-POD that measures the total VOCs on the campus. And so, you know, we'll continue to pay attention and monitor what is going on out there. And if there should be any concerns that arise, we'll certainly reach back out to them again and encourage them to come back for additional air monitoring. So I just wanted to remind everybody about that piece, and I think that takes care of it for me. Thank you, President Matthews.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Our next item is to approve the agenda for tonight, and so we'll need a motion to proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. We also need to approve our consent agenda tonight, and so we'll need a motion for this one as well.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item is our Greeley Education Association Starfish Award. And so, Ms. Andy Lee, if you will come to the podium, we're excited to hear this one. As we are all of them.
Hi. I am super excited tonight because I'm not going to recognize just one person. I'm going to recognize three. And I had the pleasure of visiting with Michelle Collins' kinder class over at Chaplow, and she was very adamant that I'm welcome to come in, but the recognition really needs to go to the entire team because they collaborate together, they work together, they plan together, and they really grow their children together. It's a team effort over at Chaplow, and I'm really, really impressed with the way I was able to see that interaction happen. So I'm going to make sure that not only Michelle Collins gets recognized, but also Molly Schoenhoff, as well as Lanaya Harkins. And that is your Chaplow Kinder Team. And when I went over there, first of all, those little ones are so adorable, and they're so fun and very creative in the way that they are learning. When they were playing outside with their masks on, they were coming up with an imaginary game, socially distanced, and coming up with rules that actually fit our COVID world. And it was really great to watch that creativity. We had a fire drill, and they knew exactly what to do. Actually, they informed me of what to do so that I made sure that I was safe as well as they were. Then as we went back into the classroom, we learned math. And math at kinder level is pretty amazing to watch. So I don't know if you remember way back when we were learning our numbers. We were pretty good with the 1 through 10s, but the 11 through 19s, those were tough numbers. And it was because they sounded different and they didn't match a pattern so much. But we learned about the say-ten method. So 19 became 10-9, and we blocked it out. We created it. We talked about it. We problem-solved, and we actually wondered why 11 and 12 sounded different and didn't match patterns. So they came up with ideas about why that was happening. So pretty, pretty incredible. And they wanted me to bring a message. And the message is, I think, as adults, we're doing a disservice to some of our kiddos. And the disservice is that we keep talking about learning loss. And when you're in those classrooms, there's no loss of learning. Those kids are learning. They're sponges. They're learning as fast as they can, as hard as they can. They're doing their job. What we've lost was time. So when we are coming up with solutions and when we're talking in our political agendas and when we're talking on our TV, let's not call it learning loss anymore. Let's call it loss of time, because that's really what COVID did. It didn't cause our kids to lose learning. They lost the time in which to learn. And that's a really big difference. So on behalf of all the educators that work with you, as well as yourselves, I'm going to ask Governor Polis and the TV and the newspaper, when they're talking about this learning loss that we're trying to fix, we're not trying to fix a learning loss. We're trying to fix a loss of time, and we're trying to get more time for our students to learn. Because had we had enough time, our students would be exactly where they needed to be or even further ahead, because we're doing some amazing things in our district. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Thank you to our Chaplow kindergarten team. Ms. Solis, did you have a?
Yeah, so just wanted to let you know. I appreciate that. That just, words matter. And if you need any support from us board members, please let us know.
Yeah, and on the one-team, two-team thing too, if you need any support from us. If we can get that changed. I agree with the kindergarteners. That makes a lot more sense. Our next item is our Council of Student Representatives report. And so, Dr. Pilch, should I give it to you or Mr. Osmus?
You know what? I think, come on up, Mr. Osmus, and we'll let our Assistant Superintendent of Secondary School Leadership do the introductions here. Thank you, Mr. Osmus.
Good evening, President Matthews and members of the school board and Dr. Pilch. It has been a pleasure this year, along with Ms. Pappas, to sit in with the Council of Student Reps and just let them lead from the seat that they're in. And these kids are, although we really haven't had the chance to be in person, they've had some really great ideas. And they are here and come on these Mondays just to share their thoughts and reflect on what they've learned over the course of this year and whatever else is on their mind. So I'd like to introduce my new friend, Penelope from Frontier, and I'll let her introduce herself and take it from there.
Hello, everyone. Wait, there's a mic.
Thank you, Penelope.
I forgot there was a mic. Hello, everyone. It's good to see you in person again. I'm, sorry, I'm Penelope Arney, and I'm a senior at Frontier Academy. Next year, I think I'm going to go to CSU for International Studies. Both my parents went to CSU, so I feel like I'm kind of continuing a tradition. I'm here to just update you about what's going on at Frontier. Overall, our return to in-person school is going very well, and I think everyone's excited to have full-size classes again, seeing more than like five people every day. As far as I know, the number of people being quarantined is still going down at our school, as far as I know, which is great. My sister and I were actually two of the people vaccinated at the District 6 vaccination event. We were very, very thrilled to get that going. One criticism, some of the upperclassmen feel like they should be allowed to leave campus during lunch. But I believe our principal, Mr. Budzinski, is already speaking to the district about the viability of doing that. But other than that, we are very excited to announce that Frontier is having an art show this year online, but we still will be having one. I believe that a link to the webpage will be available on Frontier's website, starting on the 26th of this month. And that's about it. Thank you so much for having me and having input from Frontier Academy students.
Thank you, Penelope. I think maybe you might have a question too, if you'll stay at the microphone. Ms. Pappas?
It's not a question, but just a comment. I just want to thank you for your service. You know, last year, when I first joined as a liaison with the reps, you were there all the time, working hard. And this year, I know it's been challenging. And I just am so impressed with all of you and really appreciate that you came tonight to represent your school. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm really happy with how the board's adapted to this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Penelope. Our next item is a repeal in first read of policy KCA, Community Engagement. And so because this is a first read, we don't have to vote on this tonight. But Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say in regards to this policy and why it's coming to us tonight?
So President Matthews, we're recommending the repeal. This is not a required policy by CASB, and we really feel like the language in this policy is captured in other policies, and most importantly, is a significant part of Innovation 2030. And it's all just part of this effort to really minimize where we can and only have, you know, necessary and required policies in our policy book.
Thank you. That's always appreciated. And we have another repeal. Our next item is the first read of a policy, LDA, Student Teaching and Internships. And I'm guessing it might be some of the same.
Yeah, absolutely. It's exactly the same.
Right. Yeah, we need to get rid of policies that are unneeded. Next item is revisions to our J. Student Policies and Regulations, and this one is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 revises the J. Students Policies and Regulations as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, anything you would like to say on this one before we open this up for questions and comments from board members?
Thank you, President Matthews. So it was recently brought to our attention that this policy had not been updated to address new legislation that came forward in the last legislative session. The policy, as you know, concerns suspensions and expulsions of our youngest students, our kindergarteners through second graders. I'm happy to say that it doesn't change our practice. Our practice is currently aligned with what was approved in last season and put out by CASB. And so these revisions are in line with CASB's recommendations.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Any questions or comments from board members? Yeah, this one's pretty straightforward. So Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. One last revision to policies, and this is to policy KEC, Public Concerns and Complaints About Instructional Resources. And this is also an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 revises policy KEC, Public Concerns, Complaints About Instructional Resources as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Anything that we need to know on this one, Dr. Pilch?
President Matthews, this is, this policy, as you all have previewed, has substantial revisions, again, recommended by the Colorado Association of School Boards. Really brings us up to speed, makes us contemporary with current practices and expectations in school district communities.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Any questions or comments on this particular policy change? Seeing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item is Innovation 2020 Update, Student Learning and Achievement Priority II. That's College and Career Readiness. And so, Dr. Pilch, I'll give it to you, but I imagine somebody's going to come and speak to us.
You're absolutely right, President Matthews. Thank you. We are, you know, we are winding down these updates on Innovation 2020. You'll again see in here the old logo and the previous mission, vision, and values. I'm watching the team at the podium. You got it? That match with Innovation 2020. But we're excited to share this information with you tonight. We have Dr. Stacy Dattery, Mr. Wes Tuttle, and Mr. Anthony Osmus.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch, President Matthews, and members of the board. It is our pleasure this evening to be able to share with you an update on Student Learning and Achievement Priority II, as Dr. Pilch described, and specifically regarding our summer programs, as well as our internship program and a few other grants with you this evening. So as we really begin this presentation with you and this update with you this evening, it is always good to be reminded and grounded in our mission, that District 6 engages every student in a personalized, well-rounded, and excellent education, preparing students to be college and career-ready. And our vision being about partnering with families and communities to succeed in tomorrow's world. And this update really exemplifies our mission and our vision really well. And that our value statements all apply in this particular priority area and the work that we've been doing, but specifically really highlighting that our students come first, that we know every child can achieve, and really specifically in this priority around promoting, we promote access, opportunity, and choice. And those are really spotlighted, if you will, within this priority area. We're reminded of all four of our goal areas, but that specifically, we are speaking to student learning and achievement this evening. A priority two, which is to align systems so that all students graduate on time and are college and career-ready. Within that priority area, there are two outcomes that we are working toward. The first is by 2021, that 90% of students will graduate on time and that by 2020, average daily attendance will be 95% or higher. So we will report on those outcomes to you this evening. And inside of that, the priority are really two big objectives with multiple actions that we have taken to achieve these objectives. The first being to define and implement a district-wide plan that aligns our system pre-K through 13 to fully implement the graduation competencies. And then the second is to really develop a plan to evaluate and promote our existing career academies. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Osmus, who's going to share with us a little bit of data.
Thank you. And good evening. I will be sharing a little bit of our graduation outcome data. Our goal was that by 2021, 90% of our students will graduate on time, is our goal. And this graph will show a little bit where we are. So if you notice that as we go through these slides, the district rate is in red. And I went just a little fast. Let me go backwards. Oh, I'm going the wrong way. I'm going to back up. So our district line here is in red, and you can see over time that we have slowly increased, steadily increased over time. As I go forward here, you can see that this is a state that is also on ours now, and it also has steadily increased over time. In 2018, we surpassed the state average, and we've really stayed above it ever since. In 2017, we wrote a District Special Education Plan, which mirrored to some degree our plan for English-language learners, which essentially made a push to service our students in class with supports so that all of our students receive grade-level instruction. And you'll notice in 2017, as we wrote that plan, 2018, the increase steadily over time, the belief that our students can learn in the classroom and that they deserve grade-level instruction with scaffolds in the classroom. You'll notice the plan here, this is our English-language learners, and the same kind of increase as we have that belief in our system that our students can learn. We have seen, we have seen good increase, a good steady increase over time. This blue mark shows the growth of our economically disadvantaged group, which is really our students receiving free reduced lunch. Basically targeted research-based instructional strategies that push solid Tier 1 instruction rather than always relying on intervention has shown to show good gains over time. Additionally, to support all of our learners, and as you can see in here, we've got some subgroups that we are targeting for growth. And when we are doing our job and supporting all groups, we will see that steady increase. But we meet weekly, sometimes at least weekly, if not more even. Sometimes it seems like every day. We're talking about every single student. And with our graduate initiative work, we are looking at every student and what they need to be successful, for those that are on track, make sure that they will graduate on time. And for those that are not on track, what do they need to make sure that they do get back on track and graduate? And with that, I'll turn it over to Wes.
As Dr. Dattery mentioned, attendance is another thing that we're paying attention to. And you can see here in this graph, we've been pretty flat. Our goal was 95%. Last year, we got up to 92.8%, and in light of COVID and all the remote stuff, we feel that 92.8% was actually kind of a celebration within that. But we're continuing to work with that. We know that attendance is important for our students. We're going to start talking about summer school now. You heard in the work session a little bit about that and how we're using some of the SO dollars to fund summer school opportunities. We do have 5,261 elementary and middle school students that are eligible, meaning that their data points say that they could use that support of summer school. So we are working right now on getting those students involved, getting staff hired so that we can support that and network. That's about 47% of our students, so nearly half of our students are in need of that summer school support. And so we're working on that. We're in the process of hiring the staff. We're also going to be planning some jumpstart programs in the month of July. Those will target primarily transitioning programs. Incoming kindergarten will be included in that, as well as incoming 6th and incoming 9th grade. So we'll have some jumpstart programs there that month of July. We also have some programs like 24th Century We also have some programs like 21st Century. 21st Century is a supplemental thing. And so they need to think about how do we go beyond what the district is already providing at those sites? So one of the things that they're looking at are additional outings. So we're looking at YMCA The Rockies, the Rec Center Greeley, Georgetown Challenge Course, Colorado Youth Outdoors, as some possible excursions for some of our students that are in the 21st Century schools to be able to have some additional outings. They're also looking at what staff could they also include beyond what we're doing? So they're, they're looking at family liaisons, counselors, social workers that maybe our original core doesn't have, but they could supplement with. And so we're trying to see, look at that as well. In addition to that, Dr. Dattery is working with some of our area providers. So you can see a few listed there, ABC Boys and Girls Club, Red Art Center, to be able to coordinate with them, provide them some of the programming that we're doing, support so they might want to be able to include in their programming and be able to coordinate that with them. Let me pass it back over to Mr. Osmus.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Right now in our middle school, we're on track to invite just over half of all of our middle school students, students to an intensive summer school experience full of academics and fun. We'll offer a full course load for students, but also have an hour each day for intermurals and electives and just some things that they would choose to do that would keep them motivated to come back each day. The program will run for all five weeks in June. Starts at 8:30 a.m. and will end about 3:15 p.m. We will have field trips in the city and all over and out of the city. And we will target the skills in math and reading, but we will offer that in all subject areas. Our summit programs, our summit schools Prairie Heights and Franklin, will offer more time and support for students to finish any projects and learning from their summit platform. Students at the high school level will be offered an intensive credit recovery program for all grade levels, for all grade levels, that either allows students to extend their semester, to complete missing work or retake courses that they will need to stay on track to graduate. And that would be for all, I monitor that for all grade levels. We are currently gathering numbers and will invite these students very soon. We're also offering accelerated geometry this summer for, especially for our freshmen that are finishing that up and those that wish to advance in math. And we're even inviting some eighth graders from the middle schools and the KAs to join us to get, to get this advanced track started. In July, we'll be offering AP Boot Camp and a Rising Freshman Transition Program. We were not able to offer these programs last year due to COVID, but we know how valuable they are and will be working to, to offer them again this year with the proper COVID safety protocols. Have a lot going on this year in the middle school and the high school and offering lots of opportunities for our students to get back on track if they fall behind due to COVID. Turn this back to Dr. Dattery.
Thank you. So this summer, we will continue with the Career Explorer Internship Program, which provides rising seniors a 150 to 180-hour paid internship in their chosen pathway. We're fortunate to have 30 businesses and community partners supporting the learning of our students this summer through the job training so that students are further prepared and excited to pursue that career pathway. And so this slide just shows that we have 88 confirmed internships this summer. It's, it's, as you know, as businesses and folks are still opening up and still thinking through how are they responding to COVID protocols and such? And just how to continue to invite students into their atmosphere. We're really pleased to be able to have three in the ag food and natural resources. We have 24 students going into business, marketing and public administration, 20 into hospitality, human services and education, 29 students in skilled trades and technical science and another 12 in STEM arts and information technology type pathways. So very excited. Placement Day happened this last week. So students are being notified and they are just moving that along. Additionally, we're very pleased and thankful for the partnership that we have with Vestas in the Way of an Apprenticeship Program. The Vestas Apprenticeship Program began in February of 2019 and we had 15 apprentices that year. We have continued adding new cohorts each summer since. This current school year, we actually have eight apprentices. And the Vestas Apprenticeship Program provides students with that on-the-job training and mentorship. And they, just so that they can really thrive in that industry and continue in their pursuits in this area. Vestas is actually currently screening 13 students to start the apprenticeship program this summer. And so they would launch into that next year. So it's a very exciting opportunity and one that many of our students really, you know, engage in the conversation. And so in order to really generate that interest and what does this mean? This is the, you know, one opportunity that we really have this fully thought-through apprenticeship program. And so students aren't really sure, what does this mean? And what would I actually be committing to? So this video was created in the fall of 2020 to promote the Vestas Apprenticeship Program and highlight its impact. This video is shared with our counselors, who then share it with students as a recruitment tool. And all of these students in this video are our students who have participated in the program. So let's hope this plays.
That builds wind turbines, providing renewable energy to our world. The factory in Windsor, Colorado builds blades for these turbines. Our factory produces approximately 2,000 blades a year or 50 blades a week. We need people that want to learn our trade and become the next generation blade builders. With a nationally recognized apprenticeship program, this could be the beginning of your future.
Try out the fly. There was a lot of things that interested me, like the wind turbines and the energy part of it. Just, I thought it was really interesting.
It's an alternative to college, I guess, and to help, to start, like to help to start your life after school?
As high schoolers, maybe in 17, actually being able to have experience working at a manufacturing company, I thought that was very cool.
Once you're here, you're not just stuck in the Vestas place back there. There are, if you prove yourself, you can go out on his span and it can take you pretty much anywhere in the world.
Look into it because it's a good opportunity. It's not like often you get an opportunity to be in high school, working in a manufacturing company.
I enjoy being here a lot. I learned so much and I want to continue learning here and continue working for Vestas.
The apprenticeship program at Vestas. See what your future could look like with us today.
That's not what I wanted to do. How might a person get out of it? There we go. All right. So I hope you can kind of hear that. It was pretty quiet, but it's a, it's a very, it's a great thing and it's a wonderful partnership, as I mentioned. We're also very fortunate in when we think about furthering the priority area in student learning and achievement with the help of Counseling Core Grants with our state, we're very fortunate to have had this additional support of counselors by way of the Counseling Core Grant in several of our schools. And we have two different grants, in fact, currently. So the first that I want to share with you is just to share with you that we currently have a counselor in seven of our elementary schools and one at Jefferson Junior High School. These schools have not previously had counselors in their schools. So these professionals have been an amazing addition. With the addition of another grant, it's a separate Counseling Core Grant that was written and received, beginning this coming fall of 2021, we will have then counselors at four more elementary schools. And those schools are identified on the right side of your slide. The work of all of these counselors is, really consists of supporting MTSS systems, those multi-tiered systems of support that wrap around, as well as providing additional services to students who need that targeted support. And certainly in this past year, these folks have been instrumental in the support for students in these schools. We are also grateful for the support from the Well Trust as they funded eight counseling or SEL positions that were previously funded in a former Counseling Core Grant. When that grant ended last year, the Well Trust said that they would continue to fund these counselors. And so they, they provide on top of the counselors that we already have in our four middle schools and in our three comprehensive high schools, as well as at North, excuse me, Jefferson High School. They have now an additional counselor or an SEL position in those schools. And they too provide support around those MTSS systems of support as well as students in need. And again, they've been instrumental in this work. The Well Trust also provides funding for one registered behavior technician. And they do that work primarily, working with students primarily in the elementary level. All of these positions are funded this current school year and the Well Trust has agreed to fund them in the coming school year as well.
As you know, from work sessions that you've been a part of with our upcoming strategic plan, student learning and achievement is very much a part of our 2030 innovation plan there. And so you can see here, we didn't put all the action steps that are underneath it, but we did put the two big objectives that are in our upcoming strategic plan. Objective one, aligning our system pre-K 12 to meet the grade level requirements and graduation competencies through personalized plans. So you see that that's very much a part of our next iteration. And then the objective two, continuing to implement career pathways, responding to industry, business and community needs. And so you can see those components are very much a part of our next iteration of our, by 2030. With that, we appreciate your time spending on this and we'll happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, guys. That was very informative and I think we probably, probably will have some questions. And Mrs. Solis, I think you're first.
So on the graph that you showed our graduation rates and you broke it down into the other groups, is it possible to get what the state average is on those other groups?
Yeah, we can, I'm sure we can get deeper with that one and share that at a later time.
Okay.
Share that to you in some way, if that's all right.
Yeah, and I, I think you'll see that we outperform the state in most every subgroup. So it's pretty, yes, we'll get it to you any week. Thank you.
Mr. Tally?
Sorry, I didn't know I was next. Thank you for all that information. Do we, is there a plan to offer ESL services in the summer? What does that look like?
There will. Each of our schools this summer have additional, both within special education supports and EL supports built into their staffing plan. So they are getting that additional service and it's some of that is based and driven on the students that are going to be at those locations at the different school sites. That's key.
And then when we look at the summer, summer school activities or curriculum or any of that, are we inputting a social-emotional learning specific type of class? Are we using a particular curriculum with students that summer or this summer?
I can see, one of the components, as you know, we're, second step at the elementary level is our new social-emotional curriculum that we've been just working on this year. And so it'll be definitely opportunities for them to utilize that. As you know, too, we're going to be in small groups, so we'll be in groups of 15 at the elementary level. And so ability to really zero in on the needs and be able to have that personal touch there as well.
Perfect. And then, sorry, I'm just going to keep going. And then I know we have, so a lot of our students, more than likely, I shouldn't say, I know for sure, but more than likely, a majority of our students that attend the summer school programming potentially have a lot of stuff on their plate and have probably had a lot of stuff all school year. So what does the mental health support look like for the summer? And could, if, could you give me a ballpark ratio of student to mental health provider?
I, when you ask about the ratio, I know what we are talking about is trying to look at, can our, some of our counselors, can some of our social workers also work and be a part of that? And so it really does vary building to building. I know during the school year, we aim for 250 to one ratio type of thing. And I know in the building level, we're looking at, you know, 40, 50% of our students participating. And so we are doing our best to see if we can have social workers and counselors involved in that summer programming as well.
So just to clarify a little bit further, we have budgeted for that support. It really is being able to secure the individuals if they're willing to work.
If it's available.
The counselors and the social workers, if they're available and willing to work. But we, we have absolutely budgeted for it in the budget for this summer and agree with you that it's important.
Yes, and maybe, I would, I need to say, maybe, and not to insult any of the Tallys, just know you all have far more brains than I do in this room, but when we look at counselors and social workers, I think we use those two terms as if they're the same. And social workers and counselors have very different jobs and have very different skill levels. So just, as you probably already know, just be very intentional when we're looking at who supports over the summer and what, what the supports are so that way we can align with their expertise. And then just to end, if you need chaperones to go on these fun trips this summer, I don't work in the summers also, so I'm free.
Ms. Pappas?
I just wanted to tell you thank you. I really appreciate this work and this report was so informative and just it's exciting, all of the work that's happening and looking forward to summer school. I think, did I hear 40 to 50% of students are participating in summer school?
Yeah, right now, if we look at the elementary and middle school, we've got 47% of the students eligible. So we're working through right now hiring staff and then sending out those invites. We're trying to do personal phone calls, trying to really encourage families to see the need for this and be able to access that.
And are you having a, I just can imagine that teachers are really tired. So are you, are you able to find people to teach this summer and?
Yeah. So, yeah, there's a variety. So some of our buildings are fully staffed, just with their internal staff. Other buildings, we're, we're where the people are maxed out. It's been a rough year. And so in some buildings, I've been able to hire a core group of people from the building and then we're posting it to see if we can hire some externals. We're also looking at opportunities if we're hiring a new person starting in the fall. What a great opportunity for them to start with a small group, get to know some of the staff over the summer. So we're looking at hiring some of those as well as people who have been student teaching in our building. So we're really looking at a lot of options to fill those.
Yeah, thank you for that.
I think it's important to point out, Ms. Pappas, that we are paying per diem for all of these positions that work this summer. And so that does make, we're hoping that'll make this more attractive for, for all of the positions.
Mr. Haley?
I, I agree with all my colleagues. Thank you very much. It's, it's exciting to see the successes, but you know, since when I taught in the district and the idea of changing to grade level requirements and tier-one instruction, it's amazing how big a difference that has made and kudos to you and all the staff for embracing that. If you throw out the COVID attendance, I'm just curious and I don't need it tonight, but at some point I would like to see the breakdowns per level. And I'm just curious if you have any thoughts as to why we're having challenges not getting to that 95%? And then what are some of the things that we're doing to mitigate those challenges? And then my last thing is, and I don't, at some point, I would love to see the internship program since its inception and the numbers. And I understand that COVID has put huge challenges in that, but I would like to see how it's changed over the course of time and the number of students we're impacting and how we're aligning ourselves with our communities.
That's, that's easy information to provide, Mr. Haley, on the internship, but we have, we have that at the ready. In terms of the attendance, I want to be really frank, we're not at that 95% because we didn't have a plan that would get us there to implement. We quite frankly did not. Our assistant superintendent who left the district was, was a cheerleader around that work and we, no plan was developed. I'm just, I'm, I'm a little ashamed and embarrassed to share that with you all. But if you don't have a specific plan to reach a goal, you're not going to reach it. Just hoping and wishing and watching the data is not going to get you to that goal. So what I can promise you tonight is there will be a plan and it very likely may involve the use of some of those ESSR two and three dollars you heard about earlier tonight. But we're not at 95% because we didn't have a strategic initiative to get there. We had a goal, but that, that work was left behind. And what you know from the strategic plan is most of our outcomes have been met. And that's because we had a chief warrior behind those outcomes who was making that happen. And we will do that, we will do that now. I mean, this is a conversation we have had at the level with those folks who you see presenting tonight with our cabinet. I mean, this is a conversation we have had at, at the level with those folks who you see presenting tonight, um, with our cabinet. And, um, we know we have some big work to do here around this. And having said that, uh, we've, we've maintained a pretty steady pace on attendance. And, um, really, as, as the team said tonight, with COVID and the pandemic, it's interesting in some, in some grade levels at some schools, attendance was actually better during this pandemic than went prior to the pandemic. So it's, it's an interesting lesson in that, isn't there?
Ms. Mash.
Um, thank you for this presentation and, uh, even as a parent, I'm excited to, to look into those internship programs and things like that when I have a senior. Um, I was just curious, um, and maybe I should know about this, but, um, can you tell me a little bit more about credit, credit recovery? Is that mostly for core classes? Is that just kind of like mentor or not mentoring, but tutoring? Or, um, like students who maybe had certain electives that they needed in order to be a part of, say, arts magnet or something like that where the quarter system, you know, cut out some of those options?
So Ms. Mash, I'm going to pass this to Mr. Ossmans in a second, but I want to just start with a kind of a definition of credit recovery for you. So credit recovery is really intended in situations where students have not earned a credit they should have. So for example, you've, you, um, are failing ninth grade language arts. Uh, the intent is to intervene before that F hits the transcript, to intervene early with a credit recovery course. And so you, you start where the student left off and where their learning has kind of stopped. And you pick that up and so that they can recover that credit they would have lost. And in some cases, it's courses they have already, uh, they may have already failed that they need to make up for. So with that, I'll let Mr. Ossmans talk to you about how it actually looks in a high school.
Yeah, and I know.
It's all high school as well.
Right, I know what you're saying too. Boom, this year went to a four by four block and not every student probably took the class or got the class that they wanted to take. Um, we will not do that for next year, so we're likely to go back to a normal schedule, which will be great and allow that more flexibility. But credit recovery is really just those classes that, um, one of three things. One, they just need more time to finish. And so how can we extend the semester so that they can finish the work to pass the class? Or maybe think about the units that they did not pass and go back and do some unit recovery. So this one part of the, of the class that I need to redo, or maybe, uh, something happened and they need to retake the whole class. And so it really is about just recovering some of those credits. This summer, we do have some accelerated, like geometry, for example, is accelerated for some. And talking about a few more accelerated, but right now that's, it's recovery is just recovery at this point. And then next year, we can open it up for our students to take classes again.
Thank you.
I have a just similar question. Just tell me a little bit more about accelerated geometry because it's come up a couple, a couple of times. Are we, um, you know, what are, what are we doing exactly there? Are we, are they getting geometry credit in the summer?
Yes, they are. Yeah, that's a great question. So it's a seven week class, um, that, that students take. And it is a full, it's a, you know, we compact a year in those seven weeks, four hours a day. And it is the same class that they would take if they took it all year. Um, so they have the same curriculum, you know, guide, so to speak. They have the same assessments, um, and the same expectations and taught by our teachers. Um, what's really, what we decided a couple of years ago is to really, when kids want to accelerate, it's taking that geometry class in the summer, kids tend to do a little better. We've tried Algebra I. And that can be a little more arduous to take in the summer months when it is so compacted. And, and when students, uh, have taken the geometry class, it's just been, they've been much more successful. They've been able, you know, that application and, and that carrying that forward into other math classes, that retention of that knowledge stays with them. So, and the thing that we also know about geometry is it doesn't, although we typically do Algebra I, Geometry Algebra II, it doesn't have to be in that sequence. It can come, uh, at that, at that prior to even Algebra I or right, right after in that summer. And then kids can go from an Algebra I to an Algebra II while they're in high school. Or they take Algebra I in their eighth grade year, take Geometry in the summer, and then go right into Algebra II, say, in their freshman year. So there's many different entry points is what I'm describing there for students if we offer that geometry class in the summer. So just as a way for students to be able to accelerate in math, maybe they didn't think of themselves as being able to do that, um, in their fifth grade year or sixth grade year. But having that opportunity and, and as they think about what their pathway courses want to be, what do they want to do? What do they want to pursue? And, and getting that, some of those math classes, uh, in their high school years and accelerating through that is beneficial for them. So working more and more with our counselors and, and our teachers, our math teachers, to really identify kids that have that aptitude and have that love of math and want to be able to pursue that option. So, yeah.
But you found that geometry just is better in the summer than algebra?
Yes, we did. Kids tend to be a little more successful with that than algebra course. Yeah.
Fascinating.
Like compacted.
Guys, thank you for, again, such an informative report. Uh, we appreciate it. Any other questions? Board members and alteny. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Our next item is the approval to waive board policy and regulation. And this is an action item, so we'll need a motion.
As allowed in policy BG, school board policy process, I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six waives policy FF and regulation FFR, naming of a school or facility with regards to the new online school and allows the superintendent to name the school District Six Online Academy.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, before we open this up for questions and comments from board members, do you want to introduce it or, I mean, is the title enough?
I think Mr. Tally did a great job. Um, what I, I do want to say, you know, in my six years as your superintendent, I have, I have not asked you to waive a board policy. So this is highly unusual that we would ask you to do this. And we also feel like bringing a team together to name our online school feels pretty artificial and a, a waste of people's time, quite frankly. So, um, I, I, you know, Mr. Tally, the way you read the motion, I think is perfect.
How did you come up with the name? That's what I want to know.
Was that?
How did you come up with the name?
Well, that's what we'd been calling it, was our online academy. And so we're like, oh, we seem to have kind of named this already, the District Six Online Academy. Huh, what about that naming policy? So, yeah.
Are there any questions, comments from board members on this one?
I have a comment. Just, I'm just really glad that we're sticking with something to, to accommodate our students who feel most comfortable to be in an online platform. So thank you for, for making this possible.
I was wondering if it gets a mascot and colors and an emblem and all of that.
Well, not at this point. At this point, no. But, you know, that could all come depending on where this online school goes. And at which point, they may decide that they should have a different name, that better defines who they are. But we don't really know if this is here to stay. We know we need an option for students next year for sure and, and probably a year after that. But, but honestly, I don't know if it's here to stay. As you all know who were on the board when we had our Engage Online Academy, they're very expensive programs to run and, and they're, they, it's hard to have success in online academies. I mean, historically throughout the state of Colorado, online schools have not been that successful academically. And so, you know, we'll, we'll monitor it closely. We think we'll have somewhere around 500 students next year, which is significantly down. We had over 3,000 students this year in online. So it, you know, it's already dropped significantly in just the one year.
I actually do have a legitimate question. Who, uh, who oversees this program or are there administrators? How does this work?
Thank you, Mr. Tally. And that gives me an opportunity to give kudos to Dr. Daddery and her team. I mean, really, it's Dr. Daddery and her team who have, who have designed and implemented this program with a whole team of folks, um, here at the district office. We have hired an online learning principal, uh, who we just hired. I think she was probably on your agenda tonight in personnel. Um, Sheila Bowman, did I say her name right? Yeah, Sheila Bowman as the online principal. She actually came to us from Windsor where she was online principal this one year, uh, in the Windsor School District. Uh, that we're still looking at, do we have an assistant principal, a counselor? You know, what are those other supports that we need in place to support the administration? But this position won't report directly to Dr. Daddery at this time.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from board members? All right, Ms. Green, I think we're ready for a vote.
Mr. Hayley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Our next item is our legislative update. And so Dr. Pilch, I'll, I'll hand this to you, but I see Mr. Paul coming to the podium. So maybe, I don't, I don't know if you want to just, okay, Mr. Paul, Mr. Paul, you're ready to go.
Thank you, President Matthews, members of the board, Dr. Pilch. Um, I will be giving you the legislative update. It's been a month since we've last talked, so a lot's been happening. Um, just to give you a little roadmap of where we're going today, I'm going to go over a brief description of some terms. Just so you're kind of following along a little bit better as I'm going through some of these bills. A quick review of what's happening with CMAS education funding and then we'll get into a bill's discussion. So I just want to briefly kind of give you an overview of some of the terms as you're a little bit more aware of how this process works. Um, and so when I'm telling you that a bill is reached committee or whatever, um, so you kind of know what I'm talking about. So as we all know, a bill is just a written document that is introduced by a prime sponsor in either the House or in the Senate. Um, that bill is then assigned to a committee. Um, both the House and the Senate have about 10, um, they're called reference committees of reference. Um, and in those committees, they review, um, the bill in a hearing. Um, those, those hearings can be, you know, quite contentious. Um, supporters and opponents can testify, um, for or against the bill. Um, citizens can attend and they can also testify for or against the bill. Um, and then the committee can really do one of four things at that time. They can amend the bill. Um, some of those bills can be inconsequential, some of them can be quite substance substantial. Uh, they could refer to another committee. Um, oftentimes bills that we're really worried about are referred to the education committee, who then refer it to the appropriations committee, uh, because a lot of them involve money. Um, and then the committee could also kill the bill. Um, and another term for that, and this is really just a term of art, it's called postpone indefinitely. I know it doesn't really make sense, but that's just the same thing as killing a bill. Uh, the committee could also pass the bill, um, in which case it would be referred to the committee of the whole. So if we were giving an example, it would be referred to the House. So then everybody in the House would have a chance to discuss the bill on the floor. Um, and that would be called the second reading. If it fails or if it's voted down at that time, the bill is technically said it's lost. Um, they also have this term laid over, um, which means that they're just postponing it for another time. Um, and I'll get to that here in a little bit. Um, if it passes through the second reading, it gets to the third reading. Um, and if the House, for example, um, passes the bill, it would then go to the Senate where this whole process is repeated over again. Um, and of course, if the Senate in this case were to pass the bill, that would go to the governor. And hopefully, um, Governor Polis would then sign it into law. Of course, there's a lot more things that could happen, um, in this time, but this is really just kind of a general overview of how things are going. Uh, just a few more terms in appropriations bill. These are generally bills that are effective for only one year. Most appropriations are for funding, um, of state departments. So when we're talking about the long bill, um, that is an appropriations bill. Uh, last engrossed and reengrossed. After the second reading, if any amendments are passed to the bill, it's called engrossed. And after the third reading, if any additional amendments are included, that bill is called reengrossed. Uh, I'm sure you're happy that this will be the last time that I'm at least talking about the pause of CMAS testing. Um, as we all know, uh, the U.S. Department of Education granted the partial waiver, um, from Colorado. So we can see here that our fourth, sixth and eighth grade students will be taking the math assessment and our third, fifth and seventh grade students will be taking English Language Arts. The federal government did not grant our whole waiver for science. We had requested originally that all science be waived, but they're saying that, um, eighth grade students will still need to be tested. Fifth and 11th grade, um, those tests are waived for science. Um, and they're allowing a one-year replacement of 11th grade CMAS science with, uh, the SAT. Um, and then of course COAL will continue to be the alternate science assessment. Um, I don't want to harbor too much time here on education funding. I know Ms. Sponsor really talked about this during the work committee. Um, you know, we are looking at a really promising, um, education funding. It really looks like the legislators are committed to providing funding for our students to make up for all of those budget cuts that were made last year. They brought down the budget stabilization factor for, uh, $480 million. So instead of whatever, 1.2 billion, it's down to 572 million. Um, we're still waiting for the School Finance Act to see where that's headed. Um, this issue with the total program bill levy tax credit, it's not going to necessarily apply to our district. But just to kind of go over one of those terms that we just used, the Senate has laid over this bill twice now because they're waiting for the Supreme Court to issue, um, some guidance on whether or not this law is legal. But we can anticipate that if this law was passed, um, there might be additional funding somewhere down the road, even though it doesn't necessarily apply to, um, District Six. And just, uh, I just laid out a couple of other bills that are out there. There are appropriation bills, um, that are addressing additional funding, um, upwards of $200 million for both capital construction assistance funds and, um, funds that are going to be transferred from the general fund to the state education fund. That last bill extended learning opportunities really addresses, um, funds for addressing underserved students, um, who've experienced disrupted learning. Um, and it's really to help districts navigate various funding, um, sorry about that. It's, it's to implement one or more extended learning opportunities to address COVID-19 learning impacts. And so really the state is just going to guide districts on certain programs that might be available. Getting into a few of the House bills, um, we talked about this in February, the non-substantive emails and open meetings law, that law was passed and signed by Governor Polis. This really redefines what a meeting is for board members when you're exchanging electronic mail via text or email or social media. Um, and if you're just really forwarding information, if you're scheduling, um, that's not subject to the open meetings law now. If you're still engaging in the merits or substance of, um, any business, then that could still be core, just for your information. Um, the school district provision of internet services, um, that has passed the bill or passed the House. Um, the Senate Local Government Committee will be reviewing that bill tomorrow. Um, and that's reviewing that, um, voter approval requirements when, uh, school districts are engaging in providing network access for remote learning purposes. Uh, professional education licensure renewal period. Um, this has been kind of going through a committee shuffle. Um, it's now at the House Appropriations Committee, but what it's doing is it will extend the renewal period for educator licensers from five years to seven years. Um, kind of same thing with House Bill 1120, extend deadline for training to teach reading. You know, under the Read Act, uh, K through three grade teachers must have completed evidence-based training, uh, to teach reading. Um, this bill would extend that deadline, um, instead of the 2021, 2022 school year to the 2022, 2023 school year. Um, it also allows for school districts to request an additional one-year waiver, um, if those requirements aren't met. Um, that bill did pass the House and it's currently, um, has been assigned to the Senate Education Committee. Um, and this last bill also has passed the House, the college use of national test scores. Um, under this bill, college, uh, Colorado State Colleges, so UNC, CSU, University of Colorado, um, they would not be required to use a national assessment test score as an eligibility, eligibility criterion for, uh, admission. Um, that's going to be reviewed by the Senate Education Committee this Wednesday. Um, it is an excellent bill. It does kind of provide, um, an additional opportunity for some students to still attend college, um, even without taking national assessment scores like, uh, the SAT and the ACT. And last, um, I, I do want to mention school discipline. That bill was postponed indefinitely. Um, we know that this bill was quite controversial. It really substantially limited law enforcement and school resource officers from the ability to arrest and really disciplined students for, um, certain unlawful behaviors happening at school. There was also a slew of reporting requirements. Um, the administrative burden behind those reporting requirements would have been quite substantial. Um, and really this is just one of those cases where we had two sides that were really unwilling to compromise. I do want to point this out though, that, you know, given the current political climate surrounding, um, police reform, um, we're very likely to see another bill, if not this year, then next year, uh, addressing school discipline and, uh, police officers on our school grounds.
Mr. Paul, if I may, I, I did, um, learn late last week, it does look like there's another group picking this up and that there will be some form of legislation that comes forward yet again this spring. So we'll monitor that closely and keep you all informed.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. And, um, this concerning the regulation of childcare centers, there's kind of this nuanced, um, rule that, um, for any childcare center that operates on school grounds, they have to go through a facility inspection, um, even though the school has already undergone that same inspection. So it kind of prohibits some programs from operating on school grounds because of this duplicate inspection process. Um, and these are inspections related to fire, radon, um, and playground, playground facilities inspections. So, um, this bill would require DHS to. So this bill would require DHS to accept as satisfactory a signed affidavit that shows compliance with these varying laws. So that would kind of allow more programs to maybe operate childcare centers before and after school programs in our schools. And last, this expand cannabis-based medicine at schools. Again, this is quite a controversial bill. This bill did pass through the House, I mean, through the Senate. And so here it says Senate Committee on Appropriations, that's my bad. It's actually the House Committee on Appropriations. We'll be reviewing this bill tomorrow. This bill has been heavily, heavily, heavily vetted, heavily amended. It's addressing a lot of concerns that folks are having about storing, possessing, administering cannabis-based medicine at schools. It now includes kind of a voluntary component that staff, you know, by no means have to or are required to administer cannabis-based medicines at schools. I want to point out that the district is currently opposing this bill. But, you know, given the amendments, given the changes, you know, I offer to you to consider whether or not this is something you'd rather monitor or support or continue to oppose, given all the changes. So with that, I will leave it to any questions or comments you might have. May I have some? We have one, at least, from Mr. Haley.
First of all, thank you for the civics lesson. That was absolutely awesome. Made my heart beat a little bit faster, so thank you very much. With the renewal for our educators going from five to seven years, what is the reason for that? And are they changing the number of professional credits that they need if they elongate that to seven years?
Yeah, that's a great question. So it's just really giving more time to educators to accrue those hours. And there's no additional hours that will be required under this new bill.
Okay, thank you.
Haven't seen any others, but we'll wait and see if some others come in while I, I've got a question. Tell me a little bit more about the Public School Capital Construction Assistance Fund. Yeah, so under this bill, the state treasurer is required to transfer $100 million from the Marijuana Tax Cash Fund to the Public School Capital Construction Assistance Fund, which is the BEST Fund. So that'd be an additional, you know, revenue that school districts could use for capital construction. So it's just putting more money into the BEST, into the BEST Grant? Right. We would maybe also apply for that.
And there is some energy around actually having those dollars just go to improvements related to addressing concerns with COVID, like air quality, HVAC systems. I was asked for some other ideas that might be capital needs that school districts would have around COVID. So I shared, you know, the hands-free sinks and toilets idea that we've talked about some, the water fountains with the water bottle fillers, and then the need for additional classrooms, just to be able to lower class size. So I, I don't, it looks like the energy is to have those, a part of the BEST Grant dollars, go to improvements related to COVID, and to address concerns with the pandemic, not simply BEST Grant dollars, but we'll see where it lands.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from board members? Not seeing any, Mr. Paul, so thank you so much. Always very informative. Thank you, President Matthews.
Thank you.
Our last agenda item tonight is our public participation regarding our non-agenda items. And the board welcomes comments of community members, and has dedicated a portion of each business meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments or pose questions to the board on items relating to Greeley Evan School District 6. People wishing to address the board are asked to complete a public participation form by 12 o'clock PM. On the day of a scheduled meeting, speakers will be heard in the order in which they sign up to speak. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to our board secretary, Mrs. Green, and not to board members. The board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect, and expects all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. You will have two minutes to address the board. And we generally do not respond in person to any comments, but, but, appropriate. One of our administration may follow up with you. So our first person tonight is Erica Anderson. Is Ms. Anderson here? Don't think so. Our next person is Christine and Richard Maxwell. Are Christine and Richard Maxwell here? Next person is Ms. Andy Lee. And we know you're here.
Good evening again. I am pleased to announce that the following District 6 students have been selected to receive the GEA Lori Mag Memorial Scholarship in the amount of $1,000 each. For those of you who did not have the privilege of knowing Lori, she was an amazing educator who truly believed that every student not only should reach their full potential, but deserve to. So she was just the most incredible woman I've ever known. Unfortunately, she passed. And so the way that we honor her memory and her motto is that she is a part of our scholarship. So these are the students who have received $1,000 for becoming a future educator themselves. Julia Guerrero from Greeley Central High School, Yvette Hockes from Greeley West High School, Nidia Strom Salazar from Northridge High School, and Helica Anne Santos from Northridge High School, and Jason Todd from Frontier Academy High School. In support of our scholarship, the Weld Community Foundation presented GEA with a grant made by the Greeley Education Association President's Teacher Candidate Scholarship Fund. There was also an anonymous donor who contributed to the fund, which allowed us to bring our total fund balance up to $5,000, which allowed us to be able to give each of these educators $1,000, which we know is not a lot, but any little bit helps. And we are so proud of them for choosing education. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lee, and thank the GEA for starting that scholarship fund. Our next item, or next person to speak is Ms. Laura Mulder. Is Ms. Mulder here? I see Ms. Mulder approaching the microphone. Again, Ms. Mulder, you'll have also two minutes to speak.
My name is Laura Mulder, and my family and I have been a Greeley resident for six years. My oldest son is currently enrolled in District 6. He attends the 3rd grade at Scott Elementary. My son has attended the school since 1st grade. I would like to address a concern that I have regarding District 6 Policy JSE, Student Use of the Internet and Electronic Communications. I'm sure you are aware of this policy is an annual acceptable use agreement between District 6 students and parents. Specifically, in paragraph 1 of the parent or guardian agreement, the policy in question states, "I understand that access to the internet and electronic communications is intended for educational purposes, and that the school district has taken reasonable steps to block or filter material and information that is obscene, pornographic, or otherwise harmful to minors, as defined by the board." Now let me explain the reasons for my concern. At the beginning of the year, my nine-year-old son was given a computer to bring to and from school every day. He is required to work on certain programs at home for homework. My husband and I are very strict about screen time and what he has access to on his home devices. His tablet has child blocks, as well as his Nintendo Switch, so he cannot do anything on it either without us knowing. Last week, I was checking the history on his school computer to make sure he was not distracted when working on his homework. I found that he had been watching pornographic videos on YouTube. I immediately contacted the principal at Scott Elementary about the issue. The vice principal called me the following Monday and discussed the issue with me. I was told because my son had been watching these videos at home, it was not much of an issue to District 6, because the actions in question did not happen at school. The vice principal also informed me that the software to flag and alert the school district to let them know that their students are using their school devices to view things that are pornographic, self-harm-related, or drug-related, et cetera, do not exist. I work for a neighboring school district as a 7th grade teacher, where we have been one-to-one with computers and our students for a couple of years now. Before students were allowed to take their devices home, the district I work for made sure there were programs in place that prevented students from accessing inappropriate content on their school-issue device or from their school account. This district, along with the administration and teachers, have created a safe technological environment for our youth. The reason I bring this up is because there are numerous programs that provide adequate protection. The district I work for uses Gaggle and Aristotle. The point is, software is available. It can be purchased, and it would alert schools when a student is searching things that could be pornographic, self-harm-related, drug-related, et cetera. These alerts happen immediately. For example, if a school initiates a self-harm search from home on their school-issue device, administration will be alerted, and authorities are called to make sure the student is okay. I was under the assumption that District 6 had such programs in place because students were issued a school device, and because my son, my husband, and I were asked to sign an annual acceptable agreement for the student use of the internet electronic communications with District 6.
Ms. Mulder, you're over time.
I'm sorry.
Are you almost done?
I'm pretty close, yeah. Is that okay if I finish? Thank you. I was shocked when I was told that my son was issued a District 6 computer without this important protection software installed. This violates the agreement that my husband and I were asked to sign. I have numerous teacher friends that currently work for District 6. I reached out to them and was informed that they have been asking the district to purchase something to monitor school devices and lock them down, but nothing has been done to honor that request. I understand that technology is something that our kids need, especially in the virtual learning environment that we live in today. There are thousands of innocent kids in this district, like my son, who should not be given access to everything the internet has to offer. And in no way should they be given that access by their school. If you are allowed students free rein, then parents need to be informed, because like me, every parent of a student that was issued a computer were asked to sign the same agreement, stating that individual schools would be monitoring these devices. So I'm here to ask the district some very pointed questions. Where is the technology mentioned in the agreements? Why am I the one contacting the school when my son is violating this policy? Why are computers not being monitored? Finally, please put our children's innocence and protection first, and pay and install immediately one of the many programs that is available to help with this issue. Please honor your policy.
Thank you, Ms. Mulder. That is all we have for tonight. So thank you, guys, for tuning in. If you've been watching and stayed with us to the very end, we appreciate it. And think about it. 1 teen, 2 teen, or 1st teen, 2nd teen, 13th. I think our kindergarteners have it right. This meeting is adjourned.